A lot of trimming and getting to go. We have forgotten all about that. There's not a lot of them sitting down. Very good.
So here's the quick, right?
Much of the, much of the.
I don't have any sound here. I'm going to call the, uh, March 7th Board Meeting to Order. As the record show, that all of them are present. This is probably the pledge and the, uh, invocation to pledge. Mr. Chick Cody is going to lead us in the invitation. And all who might be in the pledge, please, please say it.
Shall we pledge? The Lord is with Thanksgiving and we come to you and ask that you bless the proceedings here today. Now we ask that you bless the mayor and the board, help them to lead us in the right direction always. Bless each and every member here and every family here that's represented. Lord, in Christ's name, we ask you to bless our city, Jesus' name, pray and ask, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have been in relation to accept the agenda. So we're, we're, she went to the rich of the, uh, Mr. Ray's second on this, uh, on paper. I have a proclamation to the gentleman that we're awarding this proclamation to. He's kind of shy. Things like this, not shy. In general, but I'm just going to sit here and read it, uh, read it since Ray's not here. Whereas Ray Belandi was born in nineteen forty-three in Biloxi, Mississippi. He received a degree in petroleum geology from Mississippi State University in nineteen sixty-five. And whereas Belandi worked for oil companies like Humble Oil, Tenneco, for becoming an independent geologist and oil operator in nineteen eighty. And whereas in nineteen ninety-three, Ray began writing a weekly history column for the Ocean Springs Record. Belandi has also written several books such as The Belandi Cemetery, A History and Register, Ocean Springs Hotels and Tourist Homes, and Ocean Springs, The Way We Were. And whereas Ray has devoted countless hours, days, nights, and years to gathering Ocean Springs' history, he has completed extensive research and documentation on the history of Ocean Springs. Because of Ray, we now have, we now know about homes, buildings, and businesses since it was established in sixteen ninety-nine. Many landmarks, land, and property have been protected and saved by his efforts by educating citizens. And whereas the biggest contribution he has given to the city of Ocean Springs is single-handedly writing and creating Ocean Springs Archives, he has been a member of several groups like the Jackson County Historical Society, Jackson County Geological, Ge- Geological Society, the Ocean Springs Geological Society, Fort Maripol Society, and many more. He played an integral role in the inaugural Ocean Springs Cemetery Tour where he researched everyone who was portrayed. Whereas Ray's efforts will forever contribute to shaping the city of Ocean Springs and its future. Now, therefore, I Kenny Hall, a mayor of Ocean Springs, do hereby celebrate Ray Belandi on his eightieth birthday. And on this day, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, do recognize and proclaim as Ray L. Belandi as the official historian for the city of Ocean Springs. Sorry, Ray couldn't be with us tonight, but, uh, we're going to go ahead and do this for him. He's, uh, is well deserved. As you know, Bill Randy, uh, Ray, you know how passionate he is about, uh, history and the city of Ocean Springs. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Agenda Public Comment. Public invites comes up and address the board by three minutes each for a maximum of thirty minutes only regarding issues listed on this agenda. Please identify yourself and the agenda item. Full business, uh, we have a form to make to the, uh, Civil Service Commission.
So, Mr. Fehr, um, our W C clerk, Nusuppi, has received all the ballots. And I'll make a motion to appoint Nicole Sullivan as our new civil service commissioner.
Second. Motion by Mr. Diddy, second by Mr. Althamont, on paper.
Aye.
Repose. New business, um, the Fourth of July, uh, Firework Celebration for twenty twenty-three. This thing has, like, bounced around a few times, you know, before. Fourth is on a Monday this year, is that right, Ray? Tuesday? So, and then we always have a conflicting fireworks celebration with Biloxi. They're doing that at the same time we're doing others, um, some other issues. We were talking the other day and we thought it might be a good, or an idea, although it's a good idea not, to maybe move the fireworks celebration to that Friday before the Fourth of July since we're going to be having the, uh, the final Fridays and the Fourth, uh, which would be a concert, whoever the artist is, and then the fireworks celebration afterwards. So we can either do that or we can, uh, move it, uh, keep it on the Fourth or any other day. So I just wanted some conversation before we put this on this calendar and commit to doing it. Do I have any comments?
Pretty much the reason we didn't have it on the Fourth before is cost of fireworks and, uh, the availability of the, the companies doing the fireworks, so, uh.
Wouldn't be any problem with that.
Right, I mean, if, if everybody's in favor of that, I know everybody would love to have it on the Fourth of July. Kind of hard to move that far. But I guess, I mean, being we're already having a celebration, you'll have the police and all down there. Makes sense.
Wasn't there some discussion at one point to kind of have them move the barge a little bit more? And that way we can take advantage of Biloxi's fireworks?
Well, the problem with that is, and I've talked to that boom boom committee over there, is that, um, they shoot them off basically in front of the, uh, scooter pier and, uh, people lying on the beach going to the, to the west as far as, as far as the lighthouse. So if they moved it to where we could see it and they could see it, they would have to move it around the Beau Rivage. And that, the Beau Rivage would block their fireworks from, uh, from the east, uh, west looking back to the east. But, uh, we have a good get together on that. But I think one of the, one of the issues were two, we, we were not able to get a barge, is that correct? Because they had the barge tied up in Biloxi and we have to shoot them off of the ground. You know, eventually when, when the, um, events center and Marina's place, we won't be able to shoot them off the Bay Area site anymore. But we could, we would have the option, I believe, with a barge this time to, to blow this play out of.
And I think you'd be okay Friday?
I think Friday would be good. Mike, you got it down?
Yeah, well, one of the other issues is to get Chief Dunson to put, you know, to put our, you know, two nights of overtime because people are going to still be on the beach on July Fourth. So, um, I didn't know if we had personnel that would be able to cover that, uh, the two nights.
Yeah, although Chief got five, chief.
And, you know, we find what. Do we have the company that's going to shoot the fireworks this year yet locked in or?
Not yet. I've been reached out by two companies, that's why I wanted to have the discussion.
Because not all of them have access to the barge, I don't believe.
I thought y'all would get a shot on Friday. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. I mean, I'm, you get the motion or we're just going to? I don't think we need to. Just discussion. Okay.
That's the thing, Friday it is.
I would go ahead and just do a motion if that's what y'all are going to do.
Okay. All right, well, we'll make a motion that, um, that for the Fortune Live Fireworks Celebration be done on the Friday before. Okay, the final Friday and, uh? The final Friday and the Fourth. Okay. Uh, motion by Mr. Althamont, second by Mr. Fehr, do you think of any?
Sure.
I heard you say. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, new business is seven eleven Washington Avenue, P I B six zero one three seven zero two two point zero zero zero. Request approval of a license to encroach into public right-of-way for the construction of a deck. This is the Killwood building that's, uh, across the street from, uh, or, or next to, uh, well, across the street from, uh, the office and, and the, uh, dagger shop. And I think, uh, Mr. Fehr's here, uh, did you want to say anything?
Just, uh, just to introduce what you have in your packet there, they, you, you can see that they've already done the bulk of the construction on the facade and this would just extend that deck that they have into the right-of-way to create some seating space, um, between the sidewalk and the roadway. Now, this is a location where the sidewalk actually veers up closer to the building. So that's, that's their request. It will not block the sidewalk, it will just add some, some raised decking around the tree, leaving the tree where it is. There's a sketch in your packet. And, um, so two elements, because they would be conducting business in the right-of-way, we've, um, gotten the opinion that they do need to, um, uh, provide a lease similar to other businesses. If you choose to approve the license to encroach, then we would have to start that process with them. And like I said, Mr. Fehr is here to represent his client.
They will not encroach on the sidewalk, Karen?
No, the sidewalk will still have full access.
Do we need that in writing because we do have some?
That's already a part of that, their property, so regardless of what is decided with the license to encroach, that will not change.
I just don't want to, uh, do something that ends with citizens using a city sidewalk.
Now, this would not impact it either way.
Now, this deck will be built over the roots of the tree?
Correct.
Yes, um, so, yeah, I'm here, uh, representing, uh, my client, uh, J C Green. He's the, uh, owner of the Killwood franchise. And, uh, the property owner, Fred Moran, and myself is the architect. Yeah, this is, you know, basically, uh, I was an islander, has some little deck that they built around their thing. And I think, um, uh, you know, something similar to that, actually, I think maybe a little nicer. But, um, anyway, um, just, he wanted just a spot, they're going to, they're, one of the big pushes of their store is to, is ice cream. Um, that's, that's, that's one of their big things and they want people to be able to have a kind of a spot to go after they get a cup and, uh, sit down and eat it or just hang out for a little bit. You know, so that's, that's really what it's all about. And one of the things they, they are planning, uh, to open April eighteenth, um, is sort of the scheduled construction and get all the everything in, that's what they're planning on. So, uh, on that note, um, you know, we, we, I guess one, one, one thing that got brought up was that this was similar to the office bar has a area that they had because they wanted people to be able to sit out on the sidewalk and serve them drinks and they needed responsible control to do that. This case is a little bit different, uh, in that we don't really have to have responsible control for people to eat ice cream. They can eat ice cream wherever they want. So, uh, I would, I guess, debating this with Robert, uh, you know, they're not actually selling the ice cream on the public right-of-way. And, and, you know, it would, while they would like to have control over it, it's not necessary to them for their business to do business. But we thought it would be a nice amenity anyway. So, uh, that's, you know, if you have any more questions, I'll, I'll try to.
So, if I'm understanding, so you're saying they don't want to do a lease, they just want to do it?
It would, it, they, he would, I mean, it's sort of like, how difficult is it to get a lease?
Well, it's not difficult.
And the opening is on April eighteenth.
Well, I, I would think with the understanding if they're going to, if they're, if they're, if we can all come to understand that it's going to be a lease.
Yeah.
Then, you know, um, we could probably move forward knowing that whatever, if they're willing to, whatever that dollar amount's going to be, that's the only thing we wouldn't know what that is until the appraiser would come back with. I mean, I know what the office pays across the street. Couldn't imagine it would be much more different than that.
How much basis is it going to take, though?
Uh, it's actually eight by twenty-one.
With a tree in the middle, too.
Yeah, with a tree in the middle.
And, and the nature of the license to encroach, it is, is revocable if there's anything that comes up. So if for some reason that didn't come through, it would just, you know, be removed, but.
I, I think, I think his only thought on not doing a lease was he would like to be able to build the, build the deck and, and didn't want that to slow down.
Why y'all just not coming to us? Why y'all just not coming to us with this?
Oh, that's a great question.
Talked about for about a month or so now.
Um, this is, this started, I can't tell you how many months ago, but it has taken months upon months upon months of badgering to get every single utility to sign off and say, I don't care. Build it, I have no objection, no problem, whatever. So that, that's why it's just now getting to you.
That's part of the license to encroach application is they have to get this, the utility companies to, to confirm that they don't have any conflicts in the air before.
It was on myself and my client to get them to respond. And it's kind of difficult as an individual to get the right person from each utility to understand what it is and then say, oh, I don't care. So it took a while.
Henry, I got another question.
Go ahead.
So the other question I have is that y'all are putting posts in the ground?
Yeah.
So, you know, Island didn't put posts in the ground. They, they built theirs on those, uh, four by four mile blocks.
And I think we could do something. I talked extensively with Lloyd about, you know, like, the, the point of doing this is not, you know, don't, if there's a big old root there, we don't need to chop the root out of the way for the, the deck. This is not a major heavy structure here.
Right.
And so doing something like that would make.
Because I think this is the thing, if y'all are going to dig holes next to it, Bruce, I think y'all are going to have to obtain an arborist to, to be there because that's, uh, you know, that tree gets damaged, there's nothing we can do to replace that.
And that's something we definitely can modify and, and build it more that, the way you're discussing.
Henry, it appears you're covering the root system of that tree totally, is that correct?
Yes, so.
It's all on one side, concrete on the other, that you're going to cover it?
Cover, the deck, the deck's going to be built over it, it's going to be spacing between the boards. So the, uh, still get down through that area, so that, that is.
So now you need any on the drive, the, the road, there's parking right there?
No, no. It will be, that, that, there's sort of that, like, twenty-four inch tall, thirty inch tall retaining wall that's right there next to it. It won't, it will not be beyond that at all.
So, so how far, how far is it encroaching?
It's, uh, it's, it, it is on top of or right behind that, the whole, the whole deck, the whole. The whole deck is eight feet wide.
Okay, so it's supposed to be six foot.
Yeah, yeah.
It's difficult to see.
No, I didn't do that, I was just saying.
Let me, let me just bring, the business at quarter in Washington. And they built an outside area there. That does encumber people walking, you have to go around and get into the street. And it does encumber people driving, looking, if you're going obviously from west to east. And so that's not a good example. And I am not, uh, I'm not inclined to support us building stuff up right next to the street on Washington Avenue. I think we have a great pool of bars to bug trees and things that should be left as is. I understand the business angle that you're coming from. But, uh, I, I, I more do not support the idea of us allowing, uh, for being. For a number of reasons, the encumbrances, the folks, eventually I understand somebody owns a piece of property. And, and the employees, that sidewalk would be encumbered by people at one point, uh, who know staples there or something of that nature. And secondly, the, uh, the possible damage to an oak tree which everybody used. I mean, we're known for the oak trees on that street and we start covering them all up. I understand what you're saying, but you're still beating rainwater. And so I, I, I think his business model needs to be changed.
Is it an absolute necessary amenity that this business has to have?
It is something he would really like. We discussed it from the beginning, he felt like it would, uh, it would be, I mean, there have been shoe flies built around oak trees for centuries. You know, so this is sort of a similar, you know, little shoe fly deck. Now, I, it is, the deck itself is built such that it's not going to, it's going to keep a clear sidewalk. So, I mean, I, I understand the concern, but it is also sent back from the, the corner outlet in and out of that drive, so it, you know, visually it shouldn't be a, a problem. And we've got, the sidewalk will, you know, once everything is in places, should be easy, easy to come and go, better than it ever has been.
I mean, the tree at Island is fine.
That's, that's Island, there's, that's Island, there's property.
No, I know, but I'm talking about, it's, it's still a tree. I mean.
Uh, I don't know about, but, um.
I mean, it's going to get water, I mean, people build decks around trees all the time, you know, um, I don't think they're going to block the sidewalk, I mean, you know, I think it just comes out there, the lease part of it. Well, from a real estate standpoint. You never, you never enter, enter, turn into an agreement until you have a lease in place. So that, that's the issue I would have with it, but.
Mayor, I would have, I would have that same issue. We have to have two appraisals and a, a, a lease agreement without an amount is not a valid contract. And I wouldn't want to see any construction going on there or anything until there is a signed contract, a lease agreement.
So, one other thing, Henry, uh, on, on the side.
I think you would still want it pursuant to a lease, so just pretty clear.
I know that the, the ramp, the sidewalk was not ADA compliant after he poured it the, the, the second time. Or when he tore it up and poured it, it's not ADA compliant, is that correct?
And it, it wasn't compliant to begin with and then when he re-poured it, he was chasing the ground and it's about an inch and a half taller than it should be. And that's, that is in the worst view.
So, now, Darrell and I were over there the other day looking at this because he, he asked me a couple of things. If you take that sidewalk and you, and you move it out into the parking lot where the speed bump is, if you raise that any, uh, the regular sedan is going to drag the ground out.
We were, we were looking at that and, um, and in fact, what we're looking at is extending that ramp longer so that, that wheelbase is, the car goes up and that, over that, it's not, it's not going to bottom out. But it's, it's, it's got to be raised another, another inch and a half, um, that will entry into there.
So what we need to do is wait to get a lease in, in the works before we make a motion to move forward?
That's what it sounds like. If we could.
You'd like to pursue that?
I, I know they would like to pursue a lease.
Okay, so, so Robert, they get appraisal, we order appraisal, um, see where they end up?
Yes, sir, we, we do that and then I guess it comes back and you decide if you're going to allow it in the first place. Proceed, but you can't proceed right now, whatever.
Okay, well, I mean, my, my only question is, is that, I, I would hate to go to all this expense if there's expense on my client's side apart, and then be turned down, you know?
Appraisal expense you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they're going to have that same expense. Henry, that's the cost of business.
I think that was the question of, that's why we went ahead and brought it, is it, would you approve it? And if so, and, and we wouldn't be able to put it in effect until the lease was there, but the conversation of would you allow it in the first place regardless of lease requirements? That was the discussion. I mean, the typical license to encroaches don't necessarily need a lease if it doesn't meet in this criteria. We've done them before where they didn't have to lease the area. So that was the first conversation and then we had to determine the lease. So there's kind of two sides to that coin is would you allow it in the first place for the various typical reasons? And then, of course, the lease on top of that.
And this property is unusable because of the tree root?
It's landscaped, it's landscaped, but like the rest of.
It's not like a sidewalk?
No, it's not, it's not used for any other, but just like the, the property's on either side of it, it's a landscape or tree root area.
Got to take that place, Robert, just hold off.
Well, I think they're trying to determine whether or not we're going to approve it before they go to the trouble of getting.
It sounds to me like that y'all are in kind of favor of the deck. There's a lease and the appraisals, you know, there's no flaw in it, like that, so.
Would you want to allow it to take it upon purpose?
I would make a motion to, uh, to, that you would allow the deck after the leases. Agree, agree upon, um, that amount, that's what I'm suggesting.
And that we need to get our appraisal, approve us to get it approved.
Yeah, we have to order a appraisal. Larry, you want to make a motion?
No.
I think the motion would be that you approve the, the applicate or the, the use of that property to a valid lease.
Yes, I will.
I'll say. I'll say, I'm going to be, I'll say.
Aye.
Wait, okay, sorry.
What did you do, Mike?
You, you, hi, yeah, it was, uh, it was probably not.
Okay, so anything, uh, anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, um, item seven H.
Self-propelled property?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven H.
Second one, Mr. Cox, any discussion?
Aye.
On item H? Yes, on item H, um, we had some uh, older computer equipment that was going to be surplus to remove from the city inventory. One computer was inadvertently put on there that is. One computer was inadvertently put on there that is, that is being kept. So I need to prove item seven H and remove asset number seventy-six fifty-one, the Dell desktop from that list.
Yes. Motion by Mr. Embiid.
I'll second that, buddy.
Second by Mr. Cox. Any discussion on that?
Aye. Okay, um, under department reports, um, on the mayor. We have adopted a resolution setting public hearing for tax increment financing development plan on March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, along with the development plan exhibit. This, uh, Sioux Fairbank, the borough's mayor is here to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're here today asking you to submit to the planning commission a redevelopment plan for the city. And then to set a public hearing on, at your March twenty-first meeting for that redevelopment plan. Kind of by way of background, a redevelopment plan is an initial step in setting up a program for tax increment financing for the city. The city's been approached to do different tax increment financing for different developments in the city. And this is the initial step. It's just a, um, it's not for any particular plan. It's the initial step for the city to be able to implement this type of financing and this type of economic development tool. So we're asking you to place that, um, on your, a public hearing on your agenda for March the twenty-first to publish notice of that public hearing and then to submit the redevelopment plan to the planning commission for their review to make sure that it complies with the comprehensive plan.
So this, this is not for any one particular plan? This is for?
It's not for one particular project. Now, when there is a, when there is a project, they'll come forth with a tax increment financing plan for that project. And it has to comply with the redevelopment plan and your comprehensive plan as well.
Do I have any questions?
Mayor, if I could point out one thing, this is not the same plan we're doing for redevelopment, it's a separate one.
Right, it's different from your urban renewal.
Yeah, make a motion to, um.
Make a motion that clears out the resolution setting a public hearing for the tax increment financing, um, redevelopment plan on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three along with the redevelopment plan exhibit.
Okay, you've got a motion by Mr. Alkamont. Second by Mr. Embiid. All the favor?
Aye.
If you cares, thank you. Um, Mr. Chris Gurus is here, and, uh, he's got some information he wants to present to the board for a, um, resolution, possible resolution for downtown hotel under the tourism tax rebate program. Which is a version of savings tax. Chris will clear this up for you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the record, I'm Chris Gurus. My company is Gurus and Associates. I'm here on behalf of Oakhurst Development LLC. Uh, Mr. John Olpaza, Jim Harden, two of the principals of that development company. I think most of you are familiar with the project generally. Uh, they acquired two point one acres from the county to put into commerce and economic development. I think the city has supported some efforts for some grant funds from, uh, the legislative Gulf Coast Restoration Fund previously. For those that aren't aware, the project is proposed to consist of a boutique hotel, restaurants, retail space, parking garage, condominiums. Current estimated budget is almost thirty-three million dollars. Herefore, there have been no property taxes generated or collected from the project. We think after the completion of the project, it'll result in about a thirty-two thousand dollar a year increase in city property taxes, approximately fifty-seven thousand in annual property taxes for the county, uh, and upwards of seventy-five thousand a year for the school district. We think that the assumed true value of that property upon completion will be in the eight, eight billion dollar range based on looking at properties throughout the county that are on the tax roll and making a reasonable projection of those. We believe that retail sales are estimated to reach about seven point two million a year from the combined commercial activities there. So it's generate about a ninety-four thousand dollar a year sales tax rebate for the city. Additionally, based on food and beverage activity, we believe that fifty-six thousand or so would be generated in the city's two percent food and beverage tax, approximately forty-nine thousand or so from the city's lodging taxes. We think the county will also have about a fifty thousand dollar increase in its lodging taxes. One of the important things about this project is your downtown has been very vibrant, a lot of development, redevelopment activity. This is on the eastern edge of that. We believe it'll help push some of that development further east along the city's downtown district. And very importantly, in twenty nineteen, the project's budget was about twenty-six million dollars. I think everyone's very familiar. You guys are bidding projects every day in public works and buildings. And you're familiar with the inflationary pressures that are out there. In less than a year, interest rates on commercial lending have doubled. Y'all two are experiencing that in your bonding considerations. Due to, uh, those pressures, we're here to ask that the board consider approving a resolution that's before you to authorize the project's participation in the state's tourism incentive rebate program. And also later, uh, assuming the board favorably considers the redevelopment plan, which makes the city eligible to utilize tax increment financing, we will come back and ask the city to cooperate in tax increment financing using property taxes and portions of the project's sales taxes that aren't subject to the tourism rebate as part of a tax increment financing structure in an amount not to exceed a million dollars. We would also ask that the Jackson County Board of Supervisors participate in the tax increment financing by utilizing some of their property taxes that will be created. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the tourism incentive rebate program and how it functions, how it works. That program was created by the Mississippi Legislature in nineteen ninety-nine. And it basically allows developers of approved projects to receive a portion of the sales taxes that are created by the project to be rebated back to the project for a term of up to fifteen years. Those monies would come back to the project semi-annually, every January and July, until fifteen years passes or thirty percent of the project cost are recovered. All of the project's components would not be eligible for this program. The hotel, the food and beverage portions of the project, we believe would be eligible under this application to the Mississippi Development Authority. The condos, the retail portions of the project that are, uh, parking, you know, would not factor into, to that rebate. Every month, the businesses in this district, in, in this project remit their sales taxes to the partner revenue on the twentieth of the month. A portion of those taxes, lodging and food and beverage, will get captured by the Mississippi Development Authority and then semi-annually rebated back to the developer, my clients. The important aspect of that is included in that rebate would be the city's eighteen and a half percent that is collected. It will ordinarily come to the city's general fund to be utilized for any legal purpose. The powerful thing about this incentive from the city perspective and the developer's perspective is every tourism rebate dollar that comes back to the project, three of those dollars are state dollars. One of those dollars are city dollars. Roughly twenty-seven percent or so of the rebate is city money. Seventy-three percent would be state dollars. So it's a pretty powerful tool to leverage state participation into these eligible type of economic development projects. Uh, your consideration of the resolution that is before you would allow the state of Mississippi to approve the developer's application for participation in that rebate program. Later, we'll come and ask for the city's consideration of tax increment financing. And as I mentioned, we would propose a portion of the city's tax revenues go into a tax increment financing structure, the property tax portions. And then portions of the sales tax, of the half of the sales tax that are not included in the tourism rebate. You've got a spreadsheet in front of you where we tried to take and lay out, we haven't tried. We've laid out the components of the project, uh, the hotel, the food hall, garage, condominiums and retail. And we made a projection based upon our consultation with the tax assessors and our clients', you know, business operations of the various revenues that would improve to the city, the county, the school district, uh, on property taxes, and then the various sales taxes, F and B, and lodging taxes that would go, uh, be, be attributed to each portion of taxation. And we sum it up at the bottom, at the bottom box, where we show the various revenues to the city. Property taxes of thirty-two thousand, sales taxes ninety-four, city F and B taxes fifty-six thousand, city hotel taxes of forty-nine thousand. We believe will generate about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year in cumulative taxes. What we're requesting through tourism rebate and tax increment financing is that about a hundred and seven thousand dollars of those go into the incentives. And a hundred and twenty-four or so annually would go to the city for those various funds, in a nutshell. Talked a bunch. I'll be quiet and address some questions.
Chris, if I understand, uh, the tourism tax diversion, eighty percent of that goes to the state, right? Uh, it goes up there and the other twenty percent, if I correct on that, it's an eighty-twenty, only eighty percent of that sales tax apply? Or is it all, is it a hundred percent?
It, Mayor, it's a little bit tricky. The legislation reads that eighty percent of the seven percent comes back to the developer. But there's some fine print. There's a couple of taxes for appraisal and education that come off of the top and get swept away by the state. And then eighty percent of that, the remaining balance, including all of the city's eighteen and a half percent, comes back to the developer.
So the city doesn't, that twenty percent that's out there, the state keeps that?
Yes, sir.
So none of that comes back to the city?
That's correct.
This incentive, Mr. Gurus, this incentive is for fifteen years. Is that correct?
It is. The law authorizes up to fifteen years or until thirty percent of the approved project costs are rebated. And on this hotel and food and beverage project, we don't believe there'll be enough revenue stream to fully get the thirty percent you're eligible for. We think every January and July for that fifteen-year term, the rebate would be, be there. For example, we used this program years ago for Bass Pro in Pearl, Mississippi. And the sales were so high, forty to fifty million a year, that rebate burned off in like five years. Here, because of the level of sales, uh, we think for that rebate will run for the fifteen-year term.
You discussed, you said the county would be involved in that. Have you discussed this with the county?
I've spoken to the, I've, I've spoken to the county in executive session about this matter. And of course, as, as generally is the case, they look for city governments when they're doing these joint projects, the city to take the lead. I'm optimistic they'll favorably consider this request, provided that your board does.
That's not the tourism tax?
No, sir. That would be as related to tip, to tax increment.
What, um, what, uh, what we don't see here is that, um, what is going to happen in revenue for the city around this project? So, uh, you know, you're looking at numbers here that they look pretty favorable. But there's, there's an unknown number out there that this project's gonna generate additional property taxes and sales taxes. What people are staying in this property, they may not eat in there. They probably not eat every meal in there. They're gonna go out and eat downtown. So we're gonna, we're gonna realize the full, you know, nine percent of that. And, uh, so anyway, it's, um, we've got, uh, Jamie and, uh, and Sue here also. So do y'all have a comment?
Yeah, the only thing, I'll say, we, we reviewed it. We are good with it. Yeah, with the understanding, the city understands that, you know, you will be giving up all of the sales tax on that particular portion for a fifteen-year time period. So we're good with it. As far as everything is in it. And that's just something y'all have to.
Based on what you've seen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Blackman.
An adopted resolution supporting the application. We don't recognize downtown hotel, the tourism tax rebate program, acknowledging the diversion of sales tax in connection there.
Second, second by Mr. Alkamont. Any discussion? All the favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
I think it's a wrong call. Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Take the other one.
Okay. Motion to approve the adoption claims?
Make a motion to approve the adopted claims. All expenditures are appropriated and authorized by law and spread summary on the minutes.
Second.
My second by Mr. Blackman. All the favor?
Aye.
Monthly budget reports. Anybody have any questions on the monthly budget report?
Make a motion to approve the monthly budget report.
By Mr. Embiid.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackman. All the favor?
Aye.
Chris. Sarah is going to give us a report, uh, see why projects. We're doing this about every quarter.
Yeah, every three or four months. Okay, um, any other questions before I start? Okay, so Front Beach, the first phase of the sidewalk's been complete. Uh, working on closeout. The second phase, we opened bids and y'all approved to, award today, beer dinner tonight. Park Town Drainage, uh, Groveland Dig is complete. We just have to go walk through Highway ninety. We still have to grow out a few sections, and then the Crest Lawn is still being graded and, uh, riprap installed. Quarter Avenue, the notice received was Monday. However, we, um, are working on the sign design because that has the longest lead time. So they should be kicking off pretty soon. Lift Station eleven, um, we awarded to Moran. However, there is a long lead time to get the pump, so that contract will actually be suspended. So as soon as we get the pumps in, it'll get kicked off. And they have ninety days once we start. The CIP lining, um, is under contract with Suncoast. I'm about to issue a work order to start lining. I think we have close to, I want to say like nine thousand linear foot pipe that we're gonna line. Uh, the video and cleaning, um, y'all just approved recommending it to Smith Industrial Services, so we'll get that kicked off. The community, uh, center, we're still working with Laird Engineering. He, um, has a contractor that is probably gonna be willing to volunteer some labor or have some material donated. So as soon as we get that, uh, settled, we'll start that work. The Mary C windows, we're working on final plans and specs and, uh, also additional funding. Uh, Marble Springs, um, we completed the walkway today. Part of the gazebo is filled. The tub, the tub should be filled, and we'll be starting on the gazebo roof probably next week. Um, Zeta Lift Stations, we have two left to do control panels. I'm working with Patty to get a P O done, so we can get those finished and wrap that project up. General Persing, we're waiting on pipe, which is the story of every project that needs concrete storm drain pipe. We have not received any. So as soon as we get it, we'll proceed with that. Deena Road is waiting on, um, final funding agreement before we can advertise. Vision Springs Road is waiting on NDOT to approve advertising. Gay Lemon, we're under design. Front Beach, uh, event space and marina, we're under design. And then Stillman Road is just pending final asphalt, which I'm not sure when that will happen. They have a question. Okay.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
General public comments? Anybody wishing to address the board? Can do so at this time. We've got three minutes. Uh, it's a void. Any, any issue related to the city, not just agenda items. So if anyone wants to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and ask. Okay, moving on to, uh, Mayor and Alvin's forum. Alvin Burgess.
Okay, thank you.
I have one thing. In front of you, um, Kat put a.
Uh, one thing, in front of you, Kat put a form for you to look at. On the 14th of April, they're gonna, or March, I'm sorry, they're gonna begin putting the trackers in the city vehicles, and we would like to make a motion tonight to put this vehicle policy in place with some, and allow Mindy to have some, a read over, make sure the verbiage is corrected, and the mayor can make the final approval. So, I'd make a motion that we...
Motion by Mr. Don. Second. Second by Mr. Cox. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On Wade. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to request assistance by the county to a ditch sidewalk project on Becker Boulevard from Taringo Circle to...
Seconding that motion.
Don't you normally have to have a resolution?
Make a motion to get a resolution.
Draft a resolution.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Cox. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Okay, um, this... Mr. Mayor, is the motion for me to draft a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, babe.
I just had one thing, we had a, was a lift station on Jackson Avenue that got hit by a car over the last week, the fence got damaged.
Jackson Avenue?
Yeah, right by that. Can we replace that fence with privacy fence? I want to request it. It would look a lot better if we would move around that on the station.
Apparently, the same guy made his way around the OCC Ocean Springs Road, which you get to and play on that one.
He hit, he hit the camper and all next to that, but if you would, Alan, I appreciate you, replace that with a, with a...
We'll put a work order in for maintenance to do it.
That's all I got, next to that. Done.
Mayor, it appears under consent, we made a hire tonight of a civil service commissioner to be hired on a public works, but I don't see a resignation letter from the civil service commissioner.
She's not a commissioner, she's the administrative assistant, and she's going to continue in that role.
Not sure that's proper.
And she being a, she'll be a civil service employee, or will she not be a civil service employee?
She won't be an employee of civil service, she'll be an employee of the city.
Will she be covered by civil service in the new position?
She will, yeah.
Hopefully, that's proper. Robert, I'd like you to look into that, get back to us for next meeting.
I, I have an opinion off the top of my head, but I'd rather not give that, I will get it, we'll look it up and give you a response.
Thank you. I have one item that do not make it onto the agenda, I need to make a motion to authorize employment of John Kirkland Patrolman, Step 4, $19.67 on the grain, effective March 14, 2023, wearing probationary status pending successful completion of all pre-employment requirements.
Second by Mr. Enby. Second, next by Mr. Cox. They... Carries. What?
He's second.
So, I've got a few things here. The urban renewal map that we've been working on, we've got to condense that pretty substantially. The code for urban renewal areas, they have to be blighted and/or a slum. I don't think we have any slums in Ocean Springs, we definitely have some blighted area, but we've got a lot of area in there that's just vacant land, that's not blighted. We've got some business parks that are not blighted, not slum, so we've got to, we've got to tighten that map up quite a bit. I think, like myself, we were all under the impression that this was, that economic development also kind of played in the role of this, so, and then there is some areas that will qualify, obviously, any blighted area will qualify for economic development, but, so my, my point is, I'm gonna have Wade go through that map and look at those parcels and make a recommendation based on his experience, on what actually qualifies, what parcels qualify and what don't. We'll have that available for y'all by the next board meeting, we'll have it on display prior to that, I hope, so anybody, we'll let you know when he pairs it down, and then you can come back and look at it and see if there's anything that you see glaring, what is wrong with it. Vote on the beach, is, they're in the process of getting it off the beach, they're either gonna have to get a Traco out there and dig a ditch and vote it off, or, worst case scenario, the county will go out there with a Traco and just take you down, haul it off, so, if anybody asks y'all that vote, they've identified the owner, owner doesn't have the funds to cause to, to remove, and so the county's got somebody that's gonna come help move it and take it away. So, the paving list. Talking to the county, we are, we need a, we need a resolution of the paving list that we've supplied, and what has to happen is that that list has to be numbered by priority. And then what they will do, they will take that list and start by priority and go down. I think I'll start the projects, also told them that we were gonna do some milling while they're doing paving, prior to them doing paving, so, once we get that priority list done, we'll look at it and see what pros need milling, what don't. Here is that priority by city or by ward? I tell you what, we might, you know, I know everybody's ward is priority to them, so, if y'all don't mind, we'll let, we'll take the politics out of it, let Sarah and Daryl, and Alan take care of that, and, you know, prioritize those votes, yeah, I have a problem with that. So, if y'all want to do any politic, you know, get to people. Well, Bobby's got the whole city, so he can, you know, he can get in there with y'all to, so. March of the Mayors, maybe you want to go over there?
Yes, so, March of the Mayors, food drive has kicked off. Our city's canned item is canned fruit, so we also have challenged the city of Moss Point to see which city can get the most cans, and so our drop-off locations are here at City Hall, the Chamber, and of course, the fire station, Fire Station 1, so bring in your cans.
Canned fruit?
Yes, like the little...
The new fire station looks, I mean, the fire station's looking really good.
Yeah, the, uh, they might have started replacing the gutters today, and I'm hoping this week they'll start doing all the exterior lighting, and then I think the sign might be in this week, so hopefully by the end of next week.
What do you call that color?
Oh, alabaster.
I got one, one other item we've got to go over here, this is from the Spanish Co. Homeowners Association, Justin Lee, it says, "We'd like to extend our sincere appreciation to Sarah Harris for her tireless efforts in support of our neighborhood. Without question, her expertise and devotion were a huge difference maker in getting the major task completed, accomplished. Please appropriately recognize her at your next official function, Steve Jones, President of Spanish Co. Homeowners Association." So, it's always good to get an attaboy, your next job, sir. I don't think we have any executive session, I just, I'm gonna turn the motion, please.
Motion to the services. I'm gonna, we have 20 seconds.
Second.